All right, I'm going to call this meeting of the Municipal Building Authority to order. We have all board members present, as well as the mayor, GL, Brooke, and Jennifer. Our first matter of business is to approve the minutes of January 7th, 2025. Do I have any adjustments or corrections to the minutes?
No.
And I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve the minutes for the Municipal Building Authority meeting for January 7th, 2025.
I second.
I've got a motion from Councilmember Cotter and a second from Councilmember Pickett. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, if there be any. So, this is going to be a long meeting, because we have Brenda Moore presenting, and she's known for her long-windedness. So, our first matter of business is to consider a resolution adopting the tentative budget of the Municipal Building Authority of Murray City as amended for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2025, and ending June 30th, 2026, giving notice and scheduling a public hearing to receive public comment before the final budget is adopted.
So, we'll go through this whole budget line by line, thanks to... So, the highlights: they're receiving rent, which is actually debt service payment, from other funds for 3.1 million, allocating 16 million towards the Public Works project, and paying debt service of 3.1 million. You notice those two numbers match. This is their entire budget. Right now, alls they're doing is the Public Works project, and receiving and paying the debt payments. And then, this is their debt, if you wanted to know how much was City Hall, is 1.8 million, and the Public Works facility, which we're not even in yet, but we have the money waiting to build, is 1.2. I don't want to sit and pay interest when we have money to make debt payments while they are building that. It was just borrow money to pay money, was not a really good idea. So, that is the budget, and you're just here to approve the tentative, and then set that public hearing date, and then on the 17th, which would be the 17th, we'll have a public hearing, and pass the final budget. Any questions?
Any questions in the council? Okay. Thank you, Brenda. No questions, and I'll entertain a motion.
Yep. I make a motion that we adopt the Municipal Budget Authority budget for 2025-2026, as stated.
I've got a motion from Councilmember Pickett.
I'll second.
And a second from Councilmember Goodman. Brooke, will you call the roll?
Mr. Pickett.
Aye.
Ms. Cotter.
Aye.
Mr. Goodman.
Aye.
Ms. Turner.
Aye.
Mr. Hock.
Aye. And it passes on a 5-0 vote. With no other business items, I will adjourn this meeting. All that.
All right, at 6:30 PM, welcome to the Murray City Municipal City Council meeting. I call this meeting to order. We are going to get started by having the Pledge of Allegiance, and I've asked one of the best-looking girls at Murray to come lead us in that, my beautiful daughter Andrea. So, please step forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Please repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a side note, she just got her mission called to Argentina to command mission, which happens to be my hometown in Argentina. So, I'm very excited for my baby daughter to go to my hometown for 18 months. All right, back to city council business. We have the approval of minutes. Are there any changes for the council meetings from May 6th or May 13th? If there are none, I will entertain a motion for both of them.
I move to approve the council minutes for May 6th and May 13th, 2025.
I'll second.
There's been a motion in the second. Brooke?
Ms. Cotter.
Aye.
Mr. Goodman.
Aye.
Ms. Turner.
Aye.
Mr. Hock.
Aye.
Mr. Pickett.
Aye. Thank you. The council minutes are approved. Okay, now we have the wonderful moment of citizen comments. Any citizen who's attended today, who would like to come up and make some comments, you have three minutes. You just step out to the microphone, state your name, your city residence, and then fill out the required form. And Jennifer will keep the minutes over here, she'll tell you when they're up. Okay, thank you.
My name is Michelle Kruger. I live on 13th East. My duplex on 13th East touches Woodstock Elementary. We share the property line, okay? Christmas came early last fall. In September, a Murray City worker knocked on our door and wanted to know if we wanted cement put in our drive strip. I just wanted to come and say Christmas came early. I have struggled and struggled. I love to garden, and taking care of that has been really hard. And to have it all cemented in, so that the kids are walking on the sidewalk instead of my lawn, not that they can't walk on my lawn, but I'm just saying, thank you. It meant a lot to me, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, that's very kind. Yeah. Can we have more of those?
Hi, I'm Karen Summer Hayes. I am from the Murray Senior Center. I serve on the Advisory Board and the Heritage Center Board. And I just wanted to come today and tell you guys, if you haven't spent time at the Senior Center, you need to go. It is the most vibrant, energetic, happy place you've ever been. I joined the Senior Center and went to the walking club, and that led to yoga, and meditation, and overall fitness, and quilting, which, by the way, our group is doing a quilt for Murray City. And there's also, there's art classes, piano lessons, chess. I mean, it's just unbelievable what our Senior Center does. And the staff and everybody on the boards were so conscious of our budgets, and trying to meet the needs of these seniors, who many don't have very much money, and stay within their strengths of the budget that you allow us. So, anytime you can throw more money our way, please do it, because it's a great facility, and I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Seems like a great lead-in. Thank you. My name is Marshall Smith, and I am the president of a condominium association in Murray. And a few months ago, we had some dog problems, serious dog problems. So, I said, the best way to counteract it is to talk to the animal control, call Murray Animal Control. Salt Lake County represents you. I have to say, they do a fabulous job. And they arranged, we arranged a meeting for the board, and then I said, let's do it for everybody. So, they came down and did a great presentation to go through the laws, and what we can do and can't do. They even brought a staff, and we got over 20 licenses filled out, because they brought two extra people. And for two hours, they did licenses and explanations. So, that was great. However, at the end of the meeting, toward the end of the meeting, is the question and answer. A couple of the residents spoke up, and they said, why does Murray charge us every year for our license if we're a senior? And Sergeant Fett said, well, that's up to them to decide, they can do whatever they want. But he said, why? He said, well, and she said, well, I'm from Conover Heights. Another one said they were from Sandy. And a few of them said, well, it's a one-time fee for a senior if you have your dog. And speaking of saving money for seniors, I just did a little research, and I want you guys to consider it. I have several cities here that have a reduced rate or a senior one-time. Yes, the rabies shots have to be verified, but I can just leave this with you. But I just went to the internet, went to animal control, and looked them up. And so, it's just something for you to consider as a benefit for the city and the senior community. And by the way, they do pickleball at the Senior Center, and I didn't hear it say that, so yeah. So, a good thing for pickleball. So, can I leave this with someone? And I'll leave it with...
The person that got that has to fulfill. Look at Diane, she's giving it to Jared.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
So, let it be written.
Thank you, Marshall.
Any other public comments? All right, I will close the public comments. Thank you for those that came and spoke. I love hearing from our citizens out there. Moving on then, we have a special presentation. Mayor, you have a presentation?
Emily, will you come up, please? Oh, and you too, Brenda, sorry. You know I was set up to do that, because Emily, look at Emily coming up, she loves to be recognized. And she says, please say my name, so I always have to say her name, but you know that's not true, Emily. Okay, I just want to congratulate our finance department for the 45th year. We think it's been 45 years they have received the Financial Reporting Achievement Award. And they just don't give them away. And it's because of our great leadership here. Emily's been involved this year with doing the budget, and has done a great job. So, anyway, we just want to thank Brenda, and Emily, and your staff for all they've done to achieve this. And honestly, it's a wonderful thing. I don't know which has been longer, Tree USA or our Financial Achievement Award, but we've certainly had a lot of years to be blessed with this. So, congratulations to our finance department, and thank you for all you do.
All right, we'll wait for the mayor to get back, because the mayor is next on the agenda also. Mayor Hales, you're on now, you're presenting the consent agenda?
Now, I asked Brenda if she wanted to say anything, and she goes, oh, no. I've never heard her say that before, so she really did not want to say anything. I think it's because she's up here all the time, so anyway, congratulations again on that. Okay, we're here to present a confirmation of the mayor's appointment of Daniel Cody Giles. Daniel, would you please stand for us? Thank you. How are you, Daniel? Daniel, we've asked him to serve on the library board for a term beginning July 1st, 2025, through June 30th, 2028. Do you want me to read the other one, and then do them together? Is that okay? Okay. And then, next, Kate, are you here? Will you please stand for just a minute? Thank you. It's Kate, and we've asked Kate to serve on our library board from a term beginning July 1st, 2025, to June 30th, 2028. And just letting you know, we are so blessed to have volunteers like all of them, but these two, our newest volunteers, are so willing and want to make a difference for Murray City. So, we are grateful for these volunteers. And so, today, I would present these names to you and ask for a confirmation.
Thank you. Mayor? Council? I think we can take them both together, can't we?
Yeah. Okay. I motion to approve the cassette agenda as presented.
I'll second it.
Brooke?
Ms. Cotter.
Aye.
Mr. Goodman.
Aye.
Ms. Turner.
Aye.
Mr. Hock.
Aye.
Mr. Pickett.
Aye.
Thank you, and thanks again for, and you guys can leave, or you can stay. A three-hour meeting, but you're welcome to stay, so.
They're out of here. Awesome. Thank you, Mayor. It's always great to see our citizens' appointment to the different boards in the city to help support the city. We have public hearing next. We're going to be listening from the staff and public, and those who want to give comments prior to our council action on the budget and monies. The same rule as before, three minutes? Okay, so you have three minutes to step up and state anything you'd like to state about the upcoming vote on the budgets. The first one is going to be an ordinance adopting the transfer of monies from enterprise funds to other city funds. Brenda? And then this, okay.
We're here because of Utah State Code 106135. If we're going to transfer monies from our enterprise funds to the general fund, we have to have a public hearing, not only talking about that, but talking about administrative cost allocations. So, the transfer is a calculation based on a percentage of enterprise fund user fee revenue. It's a return on investments from the Murray City shareholders, which are also our citizens, that it's a return on investment to the general fund, so that we don't have to have as big of property tax increase or property tax levy as we could otherwise need. Contributions contributes approximately 8% of the general fund revenue, or 5.24 million. The administrative cost allocation is based on the fact that the general fund, the attorney, the finance department, provide services to the enterprise funds, and that allocation is done. The transfers to the general fund, the definition of movement of cash or other resources from one fund to another. The key in this is that there's no, like, there's no contract, there's no service being rendered. We do pay for power, but that is a service that we are paying for, so that's not included in this. This is just a transfer of money from the enterprise funds to the general fund. Purpose is a return on investment. The methodology has not changed in many years. It's calculated on 8% of budgeted operating revenue, not all revenues, in the water, wastewater, and power fund. The others do not do transfers. This is just a little chart of what the user fee revenue is for water, wastewater, and power. And then the chart shows the little orange slice is how much of that is being sent to the general fund. And then in the general fund, where this comes from is that 5.2 million dollars, or 8%. If we did not do transfers, it would require a 39.8% property tax increase to cover the costs that are coming in, just in case the state legislature ever says they're going to do away with it. There is some, if stopped, the transfer of property tax, part of the transfer is that tax-exempt, property tax-exempt businesses, or charities, or the hospital, or do not pay property tax. So, if we ever did have to stop this, all of that financial burden would go to citizens, residences, and businesses. A third of our property within Murray City, I haven't verified this recently, is tax-exempt. That includes the property that we own, that's tax-exempt. Administrative services allocation. The legislature requires that I give you a cost breakdown of this, because we do do transfers, and how the enterprise fund is being charged to cover our administrative and overhead costs. This is supported by a cost that had performed in 2012. You say, well, that's 13 years old, but if you know anything about government, we don't change much. So, a few things have been added, it's been simplified, but it's still valid. The departments that get allocated are the council, the mayor, the finance department, utility billing, human resources, city attorney, city treasurer, recorder's office, IT and GIS, and facilities department has been added, and it's allocated based on the number of facilities that they manage for the enterprise funds. So, this is the whole, the whole cost of those departments there. The city council, like, 40% will get allocated to other funds. And then if you look at the second column, the general fund keeps 54% of their costs, and then the rest get allocated based on those percentages. That's just how the percentage worked out. And the RDA, it should be noted that they are limited based on how much increment we have are getting, and so that has dropped substantially. It's now only 0.7. It only covers a very small portion, 11% of the comm dev admin fees. So, it used to be 50%, now it's less. And then that's just a chart on who gets allocated what by percentage. And any questions?
It might be a silly question. Where does the 8% come from? Does that come from that study?
No, it was just, it was kind of settled on, at one point, it was, power was only 6%, and then the others were 8. And I don't know, it's been that way since I got here in 2011.
Okay. That's just what works.
Yeah, and we don't want to play with it. We don't play with it, because some cities were using it, so they would up that or lower it based on how much money they needed in their general fund. We don't do that.
Okay.
We get the 8%, and then we figure out how much, how to cut spending, or do whatever we need.
Okay.
Yeah, that got the legislature really upset when they were doing that, to balance their...
Okay, that's awesome, thank you.
All right, if there are no more questions from the council, we'll open now to a public hearing concerning the enterprise fund transfer. Three minutes. State your name, your city, and register with Patty. Seeing there's no public comment, I will close the public comment on this issue, and I will turn to the council. Any comments, any questions, or anything else you'd like to add? Then I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve an ordinance adopting the transfer of monies from enterprise funds to other city funds.
I'll second.
Kate, Brooke?
Ms. Cotter.
Aye.
Mr. Goodman.
Aye.
Ms. Turner.
Aye.
Mr. Hock.
Aye.
Mr. Pickett.
Aye. Thank you. The enterprise fund transfer is approved, thank you. We'll go to business item number two, public hearing number two. And once again, Brenda will be presenting on us on the budget compensation increases for next fiscal year.
I would rather not have to do this, because I really hate just plastering my salary up on the board, but the state, why are we here? State legislature passed a law that says, if we're going to increase the salaries of key employees within the city, I think they actually started off wanting mayors and councils, and then mayor and council is not anywhere in here. It's just the attorneys and the leadership of the city staff. It requires a public hearing on the compensation increases. We have put everything, everybody on this chart that the city attorney has deemed was appropriate, and pay increases have always been discussed as part of the budget process and existing public hearing. They have just now said we have to do it. The city employees, everyone except for the mayor, council, judge, and chief administrative officer are on a step plan, same with all of the, and our job descriptions and pay charts are located on the website. The step plan details positions are assigned to step range. The step range is divided in 12 increments. The merits are 5% in step 0 through 5, 2.5 in steps 6 through 12, and then after that, you get the cost of living adjustments. Range addressed with cost of living. Annual market comparisons are done, and biannual adjustments. The wage scale adjusted for job description changes, and employees move to the next step at their anniversary date. There are some advantages to these, we've talked about them before. It reduces bias, there's budget clarity, rewards employees for years of service, transparent, very predictable, and employees know what raises to expect. The increases on this chart, all employees are receiving a 2.5% cost of living adjustment, including the council and mayor. All employees receive the appropriate step increases on their next step dates, and some employees received a market adjustment. This is the big chart. If you want to take a quick look, it's actually on the website, so you can study it all you want. And these are all the people and their wages and what they will end up. My wage won't be this high until next June, just so you know, because that's when my step takes place. So, any questions?
I have one. When I was looking at the chart, what is redlined?
That means that you are at step 12. So, you only get the colas after that, or when the whole range adjusts. So, you're at the very top of your scale, and that is designed to be above market. So, you are being paid market, you should be competitive, it should be really easy for you to go find a job that's going to pay more, unless you're an attorney and go work private practice, and never sleep, and you know, but other than that.
No, he doesn't.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you, Brenda. We'll, or you have a question?
How do the reviews affect the step process?
If you don't get a 2.5 on your review, although most directors don't get reviewed, but the mayor, we serve at his will, so, but if you don't get, there's a 1 to 5-point scale, and if you're not at least above a 2.5 in the point scale, you don't get a step.
Okay.
And I have had employees that I have not given a step. So, it is merit-based.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, thank you. We will now proceed to the public hearing portion on the 2025-2026 budget compensation increases. Public, you have three minutes to make a comment, name city, and register. Seeing there are no public comments, I now close the public comments. Counsel, are there any questions or comments you'd like to make?
I'll make a motion.
I'll entertain a motion if there are no questions or comments.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance approving and adopting compensation I would like to make, make a motion to adopt the ordinance approving and adopting compensation increases for the executive municipal officers of the city for fiscal year 25-26.
I'll second.
Thank you. Brooke?
Ms. Cutter.
Hi.
Mr. Goodman.
Aye.
Ms. Turner.
Aye.
Mr. Hawk.
Aye.
Mr. Pickett.
Aye.
All right, this budget compensation has passed. Moving on to budget hearing number three. Brenda presenting the budget, agency finance administration. The tentative budget, right?
Right. This is a public hearing on the tentative budget. I'll go through this kind of fast, you guys have all seen it before, multiple times. So the general fund budget is balanced with no use of reserves, using 4.7 million and 0.2 tax. There is a 5% property tax increase included in here. You'll be happy to know the average cost of a home in Murray is now $602,900, according to this county assessor. Employees receive a 2.5% COLA, the step program, increases in health insurance, which added up to 0.25%. Budget includes three full-time employees, a police lieutenant, a wastewater tech, and an arborist. 85% positions were, pay ranges were increased to be within 5% of the average market, affecting 162 employees. So just very quickly, the internal service funds are using fund balance on purpose to lower them down, it saves money in the other funds. The library fund is still saving for their new library or remodel, depending on how that works out in the future. The municipal building authority, we just talked about them, the RDA, we will talk about in the next meeting, the RDA meeting. The water fund, I added a column on here for you guys, we are using reserves in almost all of the enterprise funds, but if you look at what the reserves are without their capital projects, or not with the reserves, but what their expenses are. So the water fund has $2 million, that's revenue minus expense, so that they have 2 million to go towards their 3 million in projects that they're going to do. Wastewater fund is 1.3. Power fund, it was negative at one point a couple of years ago, now it's 2.8 million. Solid waste, they are using down reserves, we know that, that's on purpose, they don't have any capital. Their reserves are higher than we would like, and we're kind of waiting for Transjordan to get everything settled before we decide if we're going to have to do a rate increase. The stormwater fund is positive by 900,000, that's a little low. They have some huge projects out there, but they're working on their master plan, and it's probably going to come before you in the next few months. General fund summary, the way it sits right now, it's balanced with, will end up with $16 million in reserves at the end. The property tax increase, 618,387 of revenue. The property tax will help pay for the police lieutenant and the renting of the Murray Theater, which is now a full-year budget for that. It's about $900,000, or 0.9 million. Sales tax revenue is budgeted at 2024, actual less 1%. I'm still thinking there's going to be a recession, it still doesn't happen, but this helps us control our costs. Personnel and costs increased 4% or 1.5 million. Operations, we did a really good job, it decreased 4% or $472,000. This is just where it's coming from, you've seen this before. And then where it's going, police and fire take the majority, public works, salaries, take another one, general government, parks and rec, and then debt, comm dev, and, and that is all I have. Oh, the CIP fund, we've run through all of these before, these are all the one-time money projects. They, some of the, the good ones are the solar lighting on the Jordan River Parkway, street projects, 3.4 million dollars in streets projects, that's about all they can manage in a year. Maintenance on current buildings, so that we can keep them up. Total projects in the CIP fund is 18,583, and that is it. Any questions?
Brenda, I'm wondering if we don't have the 5% increase, tax, property tax increase, how would that impact the city? How would it impact our, our budgeting? And I'm wondering if we really need to do that this year.
So if we didn't have a property tax increase, I actually have always done this analysis whenever we're going to do a truth in taxation, so actually, you'll like this, I have a presentation on what we would do. Because I had to prepare for the truth in taxation meeting, because whenever you're going to go there and do truth in taxation, what are you going to do if you guys say no? So what would we do? We have two choices, they're fairly simple choices, it's not, doesn't involve a huge budget cut or anything. One is to increase the 0.2 sales tax budget. That 0.2 does go away in 2030, and we are using it for capital, that's why we can do all that stuff in the capital projects. I have projected that it will probably make $5.2 million next year. We have only used 4.7 of it, so we have about 510,000. If you know any, the property tax increase was 618,000, so we have some float in there. I haven't seen the growth numbers yet, I'll get them next week from the, the property tax growth numbers. So if we got a 1% property tax growth, we would need to use 494,000 of that extra revenue right there. 1.5, 2%, I can't even imagine us getting a 3%, 4%, 5% growth. It doesn't happen in Murray, we don't have that much empty property. So that's one way we could do it. The other way is we just say, hey, we're just going to use reserves to cover it. Worst-case scenario, it'd be $618,000, and our reserves would still sit at 25% of revenue. That would be the absolute worst case. We are going to have at least 1% growth, would be my guess.
We still would have at least 25% in reserves.
Yeah, you would have 15,400,000 as opposed to 16,200,000. So it's, it's a decent number of, amount of reserves.
Would it seem to you that we're just kicking the can down the road? Is that a concern?
Not, not a huge concern, because it's a very small amount of money, if you're talking about the growth figure that we would have had to do, probably would have ended up being a 3% tax, property tax, 3 or 4. It's, it's not, I wouldn't be worried about it at all. In fact, I think I said in the committee of the whole, when we were chatting about this in our, with the departments, that I'm fine either way doing a property tax increase. We can wait a year, see what happens. It will be fine.
I think that means, would mean a lot to our citizens, and we've raised so much in fees and, anyway, so thank you for that information.
May, can I say something?
Mayor?
I'm fully in agreeance with this, so, just so you know, Brenda came to me and with the numbers that they were, and it was so little compared to what, and I thought, if we're going to kick this down the road, then I don't agree with that. But since Brenda has assured us, assured me that that's not the case, and we have the funds to do that, then I would absolutely say let's do no tax increase from the administration's side.
Wow, that's, that's awesome. Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Brenda. We will now open the public hearing portion for the proposed budget. Three minutes, name, city, register. Anyone? Seeing that there are no, there's no public comment, I will close the public comment section of this, and we will not be voting on this tonight. We're going to do our customary thing to, to wait until the next meeting to, to vote on this. This will give Brenda a chance to get those numbers, final numbers. All right, thank you.
In order to amend, in order to amend this, to eliminate the property tax increase, what do we need, what's the procedure?
I'll ask Mr. Hawk on that.
Just tell Brenda you want to do that. This is what you want to do, bring that back the next time.
Is this, I think our first thing is, is this the direction as a council we want to give her, is we don't want to have a property tax increase. Okay, so then...
I have a clear mandate from my people that if we're going to do a high increase next year, because we did nothing this year, they don't want that. They'd rather have two small increases. They're very clear on that, so...
And for Brenda's comment, it seems like that's, we can't predict the future, but if it holds it stable, that's not going to be the case next year.
Yeah.
So then, yeah, so would you amend it for the 2017?
Do you have a preference on which one of those two options I do? Do you want to just show the use of reserves?
If you don't have to use reserves, I'd prefer you not.
Okay. Anybody else have a preference?
No, but I like Diane's comments about, we already raised our water, our sewer, storm, power. I think we need to give the citizens and the businesses a little bit of a break this year, and I think with you, with this in your hands, you'll come back to us with a really firm recommendation, and that's why we leave it in your hands.
Okay, so...
I think she's looking for an option.
Using the sales tax, the 0.2 tax, and that's what Diane would prefer?
Yeah.
Okay.
So if we do option one, what does that do for the 0.2? As we're trying to prepare for getting rid of it, is it keep us stable, are we weaning off of it?
Yeah, we're just keeping stable. It's, it's not getting, making the problem any worse, it's also not making it any better, but we did, we did cut a bunch of operations. Operations is probably the only place we can cut, so...
If we did option two, does it...
It doesn't matter.
It doesn't, it's neutral, same way?
Truthfully, it ends up the same at the end of the year. I just feel better, better if you know...
I'm just concerned that we're building up for our 0.2 drop-off, it's a cliff coming up ahead, and if we're not gaining even small amounts now, we're going to be gasping at the last minute going, sorry people, we have to raise taxes 30%. I'm just very afraid of that.
We've done that before, and we don't ever want to do that again, so, I mean, it was even higher.
But based upon what Brenda just said, it's neutral. It's neutral. Either way, option we're going, it's not changing what we're doing with 0.2, 4 or better, it's the same, right? Am I articulating that?
Well, if we do a tax increase, aren't we working our way towards weaning ourselves from the 0.2?
We would hope we are, but our costs are going up at the same rate that our expenses are...
So if we don't have tax increase, we're actually going behind, far behind.
A little bit behind, but we did cut almost probably what the tax increase will be from the operations budget this year, but then we also used it, some of that cut in our salaries. So it, one year, a 3% tax increase is not going to make a difference one way or the other. And if you just give people a break for a year, give myself a break for a year, I do live in the city, or, or we can go ahead and do the truth in taxation and have this discussion in August, and if we've got four of you...
I think your concern more is on the option one or two. I think we're all set on no property tax increase, and now we're, some of us are saying, option one, some are going for option two, so...
The truth is, is at the end of the year, of the end of 2026, it won't matter which way you went. Either the revenue will come in high on the 0.2, or we won't spend all of our budget, which we have never had the city spend 100% of their budget, there's usually at least 500,000 or 600,000 of $50 here, $100 here, a couple thousand there, all over people's budgets. So it will end up the same at the end of the year, whichever option you take. I just need to know what to put in the budget.
Brenda, remind us again, so the amount that would come out, say if you use the reserves, the amount that would come out with the increase and the money that you saved, it's going to be about 100 and something thousand?
Well, at maximum, so the max, if we have no property tax growth, I pull out the property tax increase, the maximum of reserves we would use is 618,000.
But you have income.
If we have growth of 1, 2, or 3%, then it would be less.
But there was some amount you said that you had.
We, we, the 0.2, the, we lowered our operations by a couple hundred thousand, but we also increased our salaries by more than that.
Okay. What would that put the percent at?
25.9, something like that.
Okay, that's on, so it's almost 26% still.
We're still at, we're still at where the state used to...
That's what Paula wants, would rather take out reserves, right?
Yeah.
Rather than touch the 0.2.
I just understand the math of, we know prices are going up, we know everything is going up, yet we're going to sit back and say, no tax increase, people. It's like, almost like we're, it's almost like a token gift, or a token step, when in reality, prices are going up, we are going to either tap into reserve or do some other options here. I'm just concerned about that, that we're just painting a unicorn that, that shouldn't be painted.
Same for our citizens. The prices are going up for them too, and we've increased fees, and, and we've done so much to, to tax them in other ways.
I totally get that, I understand the increases. I just want to make sure that we're making the right move, that's all.
Yeah.
I'm not saying no, I just want to push back a little bit, I just want to feel better about this.
Paula, I wouldn't ever agree to this if it was not just a 6, I don't even think it'll be 600,000, I think it'll be a couple hundred thousand.
It's going to be closer around to 4.
Yeah, we'll pull that out of reserves, but if this was like a few million, there's no way I would ever, because we've promised the citizens that we won't do a 20, 20, 30%, we'll do 5%. But I think just because of what you said, but it's up to you guys, but that's why I would support it, is because it's not taking anything out of the reserves.
Thank you.
And it won't affect next year by, this is not affecting next year, if this had an effect where we're going to build up, then I would agree, but this will have no effect on that. It's 400,000, if that affects us, we're in trouble.
Right, and I'm fiscally very conservative, as everyone knows, and I, I wouldn't even consider it if, after speaking to Brenda, if I had any question, or she had any question, so...
Thank you. Appreciate that. Any more comments?
So I think we need to settle on an option then. If we're not doing a tax, are we, option one, that's what Diane, or Councilmember Turner suggested, is that we're, we're all comfortable with option one? Option one was using the 0.2 instead of reserves, option two is using reserves.
If we vex her at the end of the year, it goes back into reserves, right?
Oh, yeah, everything goes back into reserves.
Why don't we just use reserves then?
Okay. That's the easiest for me.
Yeah.
Diane, are you all right with that, or Councilmember Turner?
You're still going to sit at 25.6, you'll be fine.
Yeah.
You'll be fine, you'll be fine using reserves. And that just shows that we should have or could have needed a property tax increase, and we chose not to. So that's what you're showing when you show that you're using reserves.
And we'll go with option two.
Okay. Okay, so I will get the growth numbers next week, and as soon as I know what the growth numbers are, I will adjust the library, will have growth, and that will go into their reserves. I will adjust this, the general fund, and there's a couple, or one item that I need to put on the addendum with the rental of the Murray Theater for, we're going to let the, the Miss Murray pageant use the Murray Theater for free, for their, for their presentation. It'll get a lot of people in there.
Yep.
So.
All right.
I will add that to the addendum, and then I will let you know, and I'll send you a copy of the new budget and post it on the website when it's done.
Thank you, appreciate that, Brenda. We encourage our citizens to go on the website and take a look at the budget and, and see how the money's being used.
Can, can we also talk about a date certain for the next meeting? Because a tentative budget included a tax increase, the notice that went out... The notice that went out said we'll meet tonight, and then sometime in August. So just need you to set a date. I'll, I'll go ahead and do another public hearing notice anyway, but just set the date as June 17th.
June 17th is right?
June 17th?
Yeah. Thank you. All right, that ends our public hearing section of the meeting tonight. We'll move on now to the business items. We're going to consider an ordinance amending section 2.66.020 of the Murray City Municipal Code relating to elections, and Brooke Smith has a wonderful, exciting presentation for us.
Everyone's favorite subject matter. We met at Committee of Hole on May 13th. It's a couple of weeks ago, so I just want to do a quick recap. There's four amendments we're requesting to make to our city election code. This is to align with our state standards, eliminate conflicting and competing codes with state versus city, and then enhancing transparency and creating a standard for all public notices to be issued. The state standard for public notices is a Class A, that's the minimum requirements, and they expect people to find information about their cities or what's happening with the cities at three places. One is the city website, the second one is the Utah Public Notice website, and the third one is the city bulletin board. So anyone in the state that is interested in knowing what's happening, or in, in the world, could go to one of those three places and find out what's going on. The first request that I'm suggesting we make is removing the outdated newspaper notice requirement when we publish newspaper, publish information about the elections. This wouldn't get, this instead would say that it would be a Class A notice, so it would go to those three locations. The second one is adding more information in. The state has made a requirement, requirement that mandates that financial disclosures and conflict of interest be filed with candidates. Our code does not say that, so I'm recommending that we add that information into our code that says the city recorder may not accept a declaration of candidacy without the accompanying conflict of interest disclosure statement. The third one is just a simple correction, an easy peasy. We have two number fives, we're changing one of those to a number six. And the last one is the newspaper notification after the candidacy ends this Friday. Our code says that I have to publish it into a newspaper for two, two successive publications. Instead, we are matching what the state requirement is, is doing that Class A notice, where we'll post it to the city website, Utah Public Notice website, and our bulletin board. So that is the four recommended requests, and I'm just opening it up for questions or sending it back to the council for discussion.
Any questions from the council?
No.
All right, wonderful, then I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion on the ordinance amending section 2.66.020 of the Murray City Municipal Code relating.
Oh, sorry.
Did you?
No, no, go ahead. He thought you were done.
Yeah.
Relating to elections.
So point of order?
Yeah.
Is it approval or?
Yeah.
Approve or deny?
I approve.
Okay. Make a motion to approve, okay? A motion to approve has been made. I need a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Brooke.
Ms. Cotter?
Aye.
Mr. Goodman?
Aye.
Ms. Turner?
Aye.
Mr. Hawk?
Aye.
Mr. Pickett?
Aye.
Thank you.
The motion passes, thank you. Business item number two is a business item also related to policies, city council procedure and handbook update, and Jennifer Kennedy has a presentation.
Hello, and this is just an update to our handbook regarding the elections and council staff's interaction with the council during a municipal election. Basically, council staffs should remain completely neutral during a municipal election. Council staff shall not engage in any election campaign-related activities while fulfilling our duties as a Murray City employee. So basically, anything campaign-related, we cannot help you with, we cannot discuss with you, we can't fundraise for you, any of that stuff while we're here working. And we also put a provision in there that you, council members should not ask a member, council staff for assistance, contributions, or other campaign support for their campaigns. So we're just asking to implement this and add it to your handbook.
Wonderful. Any questions or comments for Jennifer? All right, then I'll entertain a motion.
A motion to approve the resolution amending the Murray City Municipal Council guidelines and policy relating to municipal elections.
I second it.
Okay.
Ms. Cotter?
Aye.
Mr. Goodman?
Aye.
Ms. Turner?
Aye.
Mr. Hawk?
Aye.
Mr. Pickett?
Aye.
All right, the motion passes then, and with that, Mayor, you're up.
Thank you. Just a real quick note, the Armory opening yesterday went phenomenal. Everything went great, except I was supposed to go like this for the cannon, but I will tell you, if you look at Kathy White, our chamber president, her video on Facebook, I was, I was prepared. You look, right before it goes on, I look a little lost, and then all of a sudden, all of a sudden I go like this, and it went off, and I said, see, I gave it with the Carol Burnett thing, so I knew what I was doing on that. Anyway, scared the heck out of me, to be honest with you. I was not prepared for that big noise. I hear that some of the residents were also a little surprised. But anyway, it was a wonderful event. Thank you to all that were involved. It was just, it was great, and thank you for all those that supported it and for, for your support as a council. All right, now I'm going to just do a little video. We're going to do a little video on our project Navajo Nation, Light Up Navajo, where we went down in May last month and got the chance to really witness something very special with Light Up Navajo. And this video you're going to see real quick is a woman that got electricity for the first time, and let me tell you, it was, it was pretty cool. We weren't here with her right here, but at the dinner, she came up and, you'll, you'll have to watch it, but she probably expressed what everyone is, is wanting to express when they get electricity for, for the first time, especially when you've lived there for 40, 50, 60 years, or as in she did, for 96 years, but, so go ahead and let's start that video.
So happy for you.
Yes, I'm so happy too. Thank you guys. Thank you, thank you, thank you. You guys did so much, you guys are awesome.
It kind of says it all. I'll just mention a few things. Light Up Navajo is a volunteer effort to bring electricity to homes in the Navajo Nation. The project started in 2019, and this year, in 2025, is Murray Power's fourth year of supporting the project. Murray Power is special for many reasons, one being that our power director, Greg Ballon, began his career as a journeyman here, lineman as well as a journeyman, meter technician. Greg invited me to go down and see firsthand this event, and at first I was a little hesitant because it was quite a ways to go, and thank you, Greg, I'm, I'm grateful that, that you pushed me on that, because that is something that I, you just can't talk about, you have to experience it. A big thank you to all the line works and the crews that are doing their part. A big thank you to the city council again for supporting this work. A big thank you to our Murray Power team who volunteered for long, hot days in remote areas to serve. I'm just going to name the four. Peyton Accord, Eric Bracewell, Crosby Mortimer, and Tyler Parkin. And you know what? These are some tough guys, and I'm, I'm telling you right now, they, they got emotional over this, and I was a little surprised, to be honest, with some of these, these guys, but it was a wonderful experience. It's hard to tell who's more blessed, the families receiving electricity for the first time, or the volunteers who return forever changed from being part of such a life-changing effort. In truth, we're all blessed when we lift each other up, and maybe the greatest blessing of all is the ability to share what we have with those in need. And a big thank you again, Eric for, Erica for getting us down there and doing your part with getting the news media and, and being, it was stressful. I could tell Erica was very stressed, because if something, someone doesn't show up, then it doesn't work like shit planned, and everything worked accordingly. So again, a big thank you for all those that were involved, all those that supported us financially, and I've heard a lot from our citizens when they saw the, the video clip that aired a few weeks ago. So I thank you again for your support, and we're looking forward to doing it next year.
Thank you, Mayor.
What's that?
What's the monument?
That is, Erica, I don't even, what is? I can't hear you.
Veteran memorial.
Is that Monument Valley there? Okay.
Oh, that's a side I haven't seen before. Yeah, no.
I know, we did, that's what I was thinking at first. I didn't say that, Erica, but yeah.
Right. Thank you, Mayor. Great report.
Thank you.
We'd like to hear that, and as a council, I think I speak for all of us, we're very happy to be part of this project and providing the funds for them to go down. I think it's a worthy cause that we'll continue to, to support. And with that then?
Thank you.
I call this meeting adjourned.